I'll call this meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Alabama Community College System to order. I want to welcome everyone here. We appreciate your interest in the work of the system, the work of this board, and the work of all our chancellor and our presidents and all their staff and faculty throughout the state of Alabama. At this time, I recognize Dr. Glenda Colgaros, President of Northwest Shels Community College, who will give our indication.
Thank you. Being a leader, you know, takes courage, discipline, and determination. And as we watch this group monthly, we see all those characteristics of you guys. And so, also, when we put together your evaluation for the SAC CIC, the ones of us that are going through the tenure affirmations, we could see the last several years on this sheet paper. And all of you should be very proud to be able to see the impacts of your decisions over the last several years all together on one piece of paper, because it's amazing. And we appreciate you, the presidents, the administrators of our colleges, appreciate you for your determination. We know it's not all of your day jobs, but we know how much effort you put into this, and it's very much appreciated. Galatians 6:9 says, "Let us not grow weary in doing good, for at the proper time we will reap a harvest if we do not give up." Well, I thank your harvest, and I guess we can take credit for part of that harvest is the over 300,000 people that are touched by our Alabama Community College System annually. That's your harvest. So, would you bow with me, please? Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you this morning thanking you for giving all of us the opportunity to change lives. The task before us, we know, is huge. As we work diligently to prepare students for the careers of their dreams and to meet the needs of business and industry, in the process, we're changing lives, not only of these students, but also of their family members. Thank you for giving each of these Board of Trustees members and our chancellor the courage, discipline, and determination, as well as the knowledge and wisdom necessary to lead and to help us to change the lives all across the state of Alabama. Be with them as they make important decisions to help us operate the colleges in the way that always puts students first. All these things, we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you so much, Dr. Colgaros. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
(Inaudible) United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we're pleased we have two trustees, Susan Foye and Milton Davis, that are joining us by teleconference. Item four on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. At this time, the board members have received this in advance and had a chance to look over the agenda. At this time, I'll entertain a motion. It's been a motion by Mr. Fantroy to approve the agenda. There's a second. Second by Mr. McAnally. Any discussion? There being none, all those in favor of approving the agenda for today's meeting signify by raising your hand or stating verbally.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The agenda's approved. Item five is the approval of the amendments of our last regular meeting, July 11, 2018. Once again, the board members have received these members' amendments in advance of this meeting, have a chance to look them over, and at this time, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes. Motion by Mr. Woods is there a second?
Yes.
Second by Mr. Fantroy. Any discussion? There being none, all those in favor of the approval of the minutes of the July 11, 2018 meeting signify by raising your hand or verbally.
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The minutes are approved. Item six on the agenda, public comment. Anyone signed up for public comment? None signed up for public comment. Section seven, Academic and Student Affairs, Adult Education, Facilities, Physical, Information Technology, and Workforce Development. Item seven, A1, is the recommendation for an Associate in Applied Science and Physical Therapy Assistant at Lurleen D. Wallace Community College. This was on our work session last month, as so many of these items were. At this time, I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Fantroy is there a second? Second by Mr. Smith. Any discussion? There being none, we'll move to vote. All those in favor of approving the Associate Applied Science Program for Physical Therapy Assistant at Lurleen D. Wallace Community College signify by raising your hand or verbally.
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion's approved. Item seven, A2, is a recommendation for a program and associate's degree in Applied Science and Certificate in Business Administration at Trenton State Community College. At this time, I will entertain a motion on this. Motion by Mr. Woods.
Second.
Second by Mr. McAnally. Any discussion? There being none, we'll move to vote. All those in favor of approving the Associate in Applied Science and Certificate in Business Administration at Trenton State Community College signify by raising your hand or doing so verbally.
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Item seven, A3, allocation of the 2018-2019 Two-Year College System and Prison Education Operations and Maintenance Appropriation for the Alabama Community College System. The chair entertains a motion on this. Motion by Mr. Smith. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Davis. Any discussion? Any comments? There being none, we'll move to vote. All those in favor of approving the allocation for 2018-2019 for the Two-Year College System and Prison Education Operation and Maintenance Appropriation signify by raising your hand or doing so verbally.
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Item seven, A4, allocation of 2017-2018 Industry Certification Initiative Funds for the Alabama Community College System. Is there a motion? Motion by Mr. Smith. Is there a second? Second by Mr. McAnally. Any discussion? Once again, this was covered in our work session last month. There being no discussion, comments, we'll move to vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand or doing so verbally.
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Section eight, Executive Legal and Public Information. Item page, A1, is review and approval of mission statement for Trenton State Community College. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Davis. Is there a second?
Yes.
Second by Mr. Fantroy. Any discussion? There being none, we'll move to vote. All those in favor of approving the mission statement for Trenton State Community College, please raise your hand or do so verbally.
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Item eight, A2, review and approval of mission statement for Sneed State Community College. Is there a motion? Motion by Mr. Woods. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Smith. Any discussion? There being none, we'll move to vote. All those in favor of approving the mission statement for Sneed State Community College signify by raising your hand or doing so verbally.
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Item eight, A3, review and approval of the mission statement for Lurleen D. Wallace Community College. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Fantroy. Is there a second? Second by Mr. McAnally. Any discussion? There being no discussion, we'll move to vote. All those in favor of approving the mission statement for Lurleen D. Wallace Community College signify by raising your hand or doing so verbally.
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Item eight, A4, review and approval of mission statement for Chattahoochee Valley Community College. Is there a motion? Motion by Mr. Smith. Second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Foye. Discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to vote. All those in favor of approval of the mission statement for Chattahoochee Valley Community College signify by raising your hand or doing it verbally.
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Item eight, A5, is a recommendation of a bookstore operation agreement with BBA Solutions for John C. Calhoun Community College. This was on our work session, as most of the other items were, last month. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. McAnally. Is there a second?
Yes.
Second by Mr. Woods. Any discussion? I think everyone's had their questions answered about this agreement, and we've had a chance to look it over thoroughly. There being no discussion, we'll move to vote. All those in favor of approving the bookstore operation agreement between Calhoun Community College and BBA Solutions, raise your hand or do so verbally.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Item eight, A6, is the confirmant of title of emeritus to Dean Jerry L. Dollar for Bevel State Community College. At this time, I will recognize President Innis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, Chancellor, board members. I thank you so much for this opportunity to have recognized an outstanding educator. Mr. Jerry L. Dollar is with us today along with his son, Dr. Luke Dollar, and his grandson, Zach Dollar. Now, we'll read the resolution. Whereas Jerry L. Dollar is a longtime resident of Jasper, Alabama, and graduated from Dora High School in 1954, attained a Bachelor of Science degree from Florence State University in 1959, earned a Master of Arts in Teaching from Alabama College in 1968, attained additional graduate coursework from Birmingham Southern College in 1962 through '64, and the University of Alabama in 1996. And whereas Jerry L. Dollar was a full-time employee at Bevel State Community College, UAB Walker College, and Walker College since 1965, having served as an instructor of general chemistry, organic chemistry, physical science, and mathematics, Dean of Students, Mathematics, and Natural Sciences Department Chairperson, Provost, and Dean of Academic and Student Services, Assistant Campus Dean, and Associate Dean of Academic Transfer. And whereas Jerry L. Dollar has also contributed to the academic development of students by serving as a teacher in both the Walker County and Jefferson County public school systems in Alabama from 1959 to 1960, visiting professor for organic chemistry at Birmingham Southern College in Birmingham, Alabama from 1975 to 1979, visiting professor in the Department of Chemistry at Duke University in Durham, North Carolina in 1993. Whereas Jerry L. Dollar's commitment to academic excellence also includes involvement as the Coordinator of Distance Learning for the Fed Campus, Consultant for the Science Center in Burbank, California, Member of Search Committees at the University of Alabama at Birmingham. Whereas Jerry L. Dollar gained additional academic and leadership skills through his distinguished military service, having served in the United States Army, graduating from U.S. Army Field Artillery Basic Officer Training and from the U.S. Army War College, beginning his service as a supply officer in Jasper, Alabama, and advancing through the ranks of Intelligence Officer, Inspector General, Deputy Chief of Staff, Reserve Component Team Chief, and Commandant, United States Reserve Forces School. And whereas Jerry L. Dollar has been involved in a number of professional organizations and activities throughout his career, including Vice President and Treasurer for Educational Talent and Talent Consulting Services, past member of the Walker County Arts Council, and a research chemist. Whereas the Alabama Community College System, Board of Trustees, and the Chancellor of the Alabama Community College wish to extend formally their appreciation to Jerry L. Dollar for his contributions to education by bestowing upon him the title of Dean Emeritus. Now, therefore, let it be resolved that the Alabama Community College System hereby names Jerry L. Dollar as Dean Emeritus of Bevel State Community College.
I'd just like to say that it is obvious Dean Dollar's unwavering commitment to education throughout his career. He's shown a great dedication to Bevel State, previously to Walker College. As well known for his integrity and passion for student success, he's instructed many students who have went on to lead productive professional careers, many of whom are physicians, pharmacists, veterinarians, and the like. I believe him to be a true scholar and gentleman, and I'd like to thank you, Dean Dollar, for everything that you've given Bevel State, and more importantly, to the students whose lives you have touched and made better. With that being said, I would be honored to make the motion that we confer the title of emeritus to Dean Jerry Dollar. You have a motion. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Smith. Any discussion? There being none, we'll move to vote. All those in favor preferring the title of Dean Emeritus to Dean Dollar, please raise your hand or do so verbally.
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It is unanimous. Dean Dollar.
I would like to thank you, Chancellor, and the Alabama Community College System for this honor. As I receive the honor of being emeritus, I'm also humbled. I tried all my life to be the very best at any and everything I've tried to do. I sought personal approval and encouragement in my students throughout the years. From my early beginnings with Southern Research Institute as an organic chemist, to the military, and all my experiences in higher education, my profession and my life experiences have greatly influenced what I once thought was learning to what I now realize is true. For some forty to fifty years after, as I look back at life, I realize that book learning primarily by memory may be the beginning of learning, but it's not learning. An old phrase that's gone with me most of my life goes, "Things I memorize, I forget. Things I learn, I forget." Although things memorized may be the beginning of learning, it's not the end. It's the beginning. Over the past fifty-three years, I've tried to make words that I read and hear become alive by doing, showing, and applying these words, sentences, and paragraphs. Over the past fifty-three years, I have been a player in the lives of over one hundred former students who chose to learn and not just remember. This group includes twenty-eight M.D.s, eighteen dentists, thirty-nine pharmacists, three vets, one optometrist, two doctor of chiropractic medicine, six Ph.D.s, two community college residents, the former director of the Alabama Ethics Commission, Jim Zander, and the current mayor of Jasper, Alabama. I would be remiss if I did not say that my son, Dr. Luke Dollar, who's with me today, was one of those. Again, I'm honored to accept this recommendation, and I will do everything in my power to continue to seek knowledge and try to impact that knowledge on young people. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dean Dollar. You have set an example for all of us, and it's exhibited so much by the three generations of your family represented here today. Just one, you blessed this one with presence. Item eight, A7, is transfer of equipment for George C. Wallace Community College Dothan. Is there a motion? Motion by Mr. Smith. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. McAnally. Any discussion? There being none, we'll move to vote. All those in favor of approving the transfer of equipment for George C. Wallace Community College Enterprise State, please signify by raising your hand or doing so verbally.
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Item eight, A8, is the sale of real property for George C. Wallace Community College Dothan. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Davis. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Woods. Any discussion? There being none, we'll move to vote. All those in favor of the sale of real property for George C. Wallace Community College Dothan, please raise your hand or do so verbally.
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Item eight, A9, is the acceptance of corrective deed to the Alabama Community College System. This has to do with the Bruton site for Coastal Alabama Community College and its ability to correct an error in the boundaries. At this time, I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Fantroy. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Smith. Any discussion? There being none, we'll move to vote. All those in favor of acceptance of corrective deed to the Alabama Community College System for property at the Bruton campus for Coastal Community College signify by raising your hand or doing so verbally.
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Anyone opposed? Okay. Here it is. All right. Section nine, personnel.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have two new system office employees to introduce to you this morning. The first, Ms. Tina Ward. Tina joined the system office on August 1st as the Staff and Logistical Support Assistant. Tina brings over ten years of experience to the Alabama Community College System, having previously worked for the Alabama Department of Corrections, the ABC Board, the Department of Finance, the Alabama Law Enforcement Agency, and most recently, the Alabama Department of Labor. Please join me in welcoming Ms. Tina. The second is Ms. Yolanda Wilson. Yolanda joined the system office also on August 1st as the Career and Technical Education Program Analyst. Prior to joining the system office, Yolanda was employed at Alabama State University for eleven years, where she worked with the Office of Grants and Contracts, the Trio Upper Bound Program, and the Small Business Development Center. For the past four years, Yolanda has served as a career and technical education teacher with the Montgomery Public School System. Yolanda has a Bachelor of Science degree in management and a Master of Business Administration, both from Troy University at Montgomery. Please join me in welcoming Yolanda.
Section ten, Chancellor's report? Very good. Okay. Item eleven, we will, after adjournment, we will reconvene for our work session in about fifteen minutes, because it's scheduled to start at 10:45. I would ask the board members not to get too far away, and so we can get started on time. But we'll start the work session at 10:45, and then our next board meeting will be in this room, September 12, 10:00 a.m. If the board members have any need of comments, Mr. Smith.
Mr. Chairman, Chancellor, President, I want to thank y'all for the information that are given to us prior to the work session, the work sessions, really, for a lot of questions that are asked that we get answered to, and that makes this process a lot smoother. And I really want to thank y'all for getting everything answered, really, for a lot. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, and I just echo your comment. We appreciate the support and responsibility to the Chancellor and all of his staff for any questions that we have, and it's a big part of our meetings. and it's a big part of our meetings running smoothly because we have a good, solid work session, and we're given the information that we need, and communication's been excellent. We appreciate it very much. Anything else from the board? Once again, Dean Dollar, congratulations, sir. I just appreciate you so much. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion is a second. All those in favor, signify by aye by saying aye. We stand adjourned.